Good morning. Would everyone please rise for the pledge? Thank you. I'll call this meeting to order. I'll entertain a motion of reading and approval of the minutes of last meeting.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only. No one? Okay, thank you. Proclamation presentations, 230110. This is a proclamation declaring April 23 through the 29th, 2023, is National Library Week in Lackawanna County. Here to present the proclamation is Deputy Chief of Staff, Ms. Tracy Hart. The reason Tracy is going to read this is because she has been very involved in the acquisition of a new bookmobile for the library system. And actually, the real reason is the creation of a literacy committee in Lackawanna County. President Obama declared literacy as a health crisis somewhere around eight years ago, I guess it would have been. And it's something that gained a lot of traction amongst certain groups. Sandy Lamanna has been a spearhead for it, and she and Ms. Hart really have been forceful in this, and they've done a great job. Now, they've formed a committee, it's just getting started. COVID kind of threw us off track, but it's definitely going in the right direction now. And Ms. Hart, thank you.
Whereas today's libraries are more about what they can do with and for their communities, and not just about what they have on their shelves. Libraries have long served as trusted institutions, often the heart of their cities, towns, schools, and academic campuses. And whereas libraries serve people of all ages, interests, and backgrounds, providing the resources and space to engage in lifelong learning. Libraries often offer equipment and professional staff support to utilize technology, programs, and services, often free or with nominal charges to their users. And whereas libraries are a resource for all, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. We recognize librarians as information professionals who provide expertise, services, and guidance for patrons to access credible sources and material, making their own informed decisions about the world today. And whereas libraries provide access to and display a wide range of information, not just a majority opinion or a single perspective. Librarians hold the professional values of diversity, equity, and inclusion to meet the needs of all users. Now therefore, we, Jerry Notariani, Debbie Dominic, and Chris Shermack, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby recognize and proclaim April 23 to the 29th of 2023 to be National Library Week in Lackawanna County.
Here to speak on that today is Mary Garm, the Director of the Library.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
And thank you, Tracy, for that lovely proclamation. We appreciate that. And I'd like to introduce you too to Sandy Longo, who's sitting in the very back. Can you wave, Sandy? Sandy's representing the Lackawanna County Library System on the county's Literacy Committee. So we're happy that she's able to be with us today, too. So thank you for recognizing National Library Week here in Lackawanna County. And as always, thank you so much for your continuing support of libraries here in the county. The theme for National Library Week this year is "There's More to the Story." We've been writing our story together here in Lackawanna County for 40 years, and we're delighted to have this opportunity to show off just how far our libraries have come in that time. With your Lackawanna County Library Card, you can borrow books, of course, but you can also use the library's computers and internet. You can borrow board games. You can download ebooks, audiobooks, and movies. You can hear and learn from world-class speakers, local experts, and performers. So I'd like to tell you a few of the other things you can do at our libraries. The Abington Community Library has a teaching kitchen that offers demonstrations and cooking classes for people of all ages. If you're looking for a job, you can make an appointment with a Pennsylvania Career Link Counselor at the Carbondale Public Library. Kids can learn how to code or how to play ping-pong at the Dalton Community Library. And at the North Pocono Public Library, master gardeners teach everyone, from children to adults and families, how to grow their own food. If you need an air compressor or a pair of binoculars and you don't want to go out and buy your own, you can stop by the Scranton Public Library and borrow them. The Family Place at the Taylor Community Library encourages early literacy and parent education using a play-based program. And teens have their own special place to study, socialize, and collaborate at the Valley Community Library. And those are just a few of the special things you can find at the library, and that's why there's more to the story than you might have thought. Lackawanna County residents can take advantage of all of our services for free with a library card. And to get a card, all you need to do is stop by any one of our libraries or join up on our webpage, lclshome.org. National Library Week is a great time to visit or to revisit your library, and thanks again, Commissioners, for helping us celebrate. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mary, for the great work that you do.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Proclamation presentation 230111. Pardon me? Oh, you want to come up here, Mary? Get a picture?
Absolutely.
We got a bunch of them.
We got a bunch.
Okay. That's a good thing.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Good morning.
Yeah, thank you.
We have to stand next to each other.
Squeeze on in, everyone.
We have great nice red vines.
All right.
Everybody there? Everybody's gonna look at me and smile. I think a bunch of them. Smile. It's good. One more.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Good to see you.
The last.
Oh, yeah.
Where?
Here? What? Boardroom?
The, just so everyone's aware, the literacy committee will meet here at 5:30 in this Commissioner's Boardroom. It's going to be a great project when it gets fully off the ground, and we just want to thank everybody involved with it. Okay. Proclamation 230111. Certificates of recognition for Lackawanna County Deputy Sheriffs. Commissioner Shermack, you want to read that for us?
Absolutely. So today, I have the privilege of honoring two of our long-serving sheriff deputies. And today, if they'd like to come up front, we have Corporal Brenda Guzli and Deputy Sheriff Dave Pascolini. Corporal Brenda Guzli, 44 years of service to Lackawanna County and to the Sheriff's Department. And Dave, 40 years of service to Lackawanna County and Sheriff's Department. Just so everybody knows, they don't want to be here getting these today. But we appreciate everything.
Tell me how to do it. Good.
All right. Good. There you go. You take one one off the flag.
That's good.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take one one off the sheriff's.
Yeah.
Mine up.
I'm back up.
What's up there, buddy?
We get in between you two.
We all fit?
Sure.
Get in here.
Yeah, we're good. We're good. Here we go. Everybody look at me and smile.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get Sheriff McAndrew to say a few words for us, please? Sheriff?
Commissioners, everyone, thank you very much for having us. Brenda, she's been a deputy corporal in the Sheriff's Office for 44 years. She's served under three sheriffs, Sheriff Van Kovage, Sheriff Zizmansky, and myself. Brenda has run the Civil Division for 44 years. An exemplary employee, has performed her duties terrifically, and I couldn't be more proud of her. And I congratulate you, Brenda, on behalf of the Sheriff's Office and the citizens of Lackawanna County, when we ought to thank you for your excellent community service that you've performed over these 44 years. And we wish you the best, and we congratulate you.
Deputy Dave Pascolini, 40 years of service. Dave, when you started here, I just graduated from high school in 1983. I graduated from high school. Dave has performed every duty in the Sheriff's Office, and again, he's done it with great, great ability, and he's been another exemplary employee of mine. And Dave's performed every duty, as I said, in the Sheriff's Office, and he's done it well for 40 years. And he's served under Sheriff Zizmansky and myself. And I want to thank you again, Dave, for your performance and your community service to the Sheriff's Office and to the residents of Lackawanna County. And for that, I say thank you and congratulate both of you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you all.
Now, you guys have to go back to work now.
Yeah, they're not retiring. They're just...
Just kidding, just kidding.
Okay. Resolution 230112.
Approving the current payables. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County's general fund, numbers 355688-356528 inclusive, totaling $4,453,084.26. The county's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $6,359,747. Adopted a regular meaning, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 19, 2023. Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 230103.
Certifying the matching state funds to the County of Lackawanna Transit System. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby resolve and certify that it will provide to the County of Lackawanna Transit System, COLT's, local funds in the amount of $922,665 to match state funds provided pursuant to 74 PACS Section 1513 in fiscal year 23 through 24. Furthermore, the Board of Commissioners dissolves and certifies that the required amount of local matching funds will be provided no later than the end of the state fiscal year, June 30, 2024. Adopted a regular meaning, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 19, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the COLT CFO, Mr. Michael Dancheck.
Mike? How are you?
Good morning. It's going to be hard to top the last two speakers, but essentially what we're looking for in the ask of $922,665 is this is our operating assistance. The state provides a certain percentage, and then it's required due to Act 44 of the Transportation Code that we procure a local match from our county. This happens every year, and this is, you know, just vital operating assistance for us to pay for our gas and our maintenance of our vehicles. So if you have any questions, I'd like to ask, you know, you can ask, but this... And by the way, before I close, this is a 5% increase from last year. So usually, the increases are between 5 and 7%. So this tends to be on the lower side, so...
It's pretty standard stuff, right, Mike?
Yes, yes, sir.
Anyone have questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 230104.
Entering into a co-promotion agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a co-promotion agreement with Odyssey, Pennsylvania, LLC, and Scranton tomorrow for the Scrantastic Spectacular on Courthouse Square, July 3, 2023. Adopted a regular meaning, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 19, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Arts and Cultural Director, Ms. Maureen McGuigan.
Good morning, everybody. So it's that time of year, it's only May, but we're planning for July. So this is pretty standard of what we've done since the beginning of Scrantastic started. Odyssey is our partner, they help sponsor the fireworks, so along with Scranton tomorrow that we sign a co-promotion agreement with them every year for the event.
Any questions for Maureen? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 230105.
Entering into an agreement with Community Development Properties. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an agreement with Community Development Properties, Scranton Incorporated, to allow international fireworks to use the rooftop of the Linden Street Garage located 305 North Washington Avenue on Monday, July 3, 2023, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. for the purposes of a fireworks display. The agreement is among Community Development Properties, Scranton Incorporated, Scram Parking Authority, ABM Parking Services, Scranton Tomorrow, International Fireworks, and Lackawanna County. Adopted a regular meaning, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 19, 2023. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here is Director McGuigan.
So this is a parking agreement that all of the partners sign so that we have use of the, and this year it'll be the Linden Street Garage.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Maureen?
Nope.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 230106.
Granting the Scranton Tomorrow funding request. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby grant the cultural partnership funding request for the Scranton Tomorrow organization for the July 3 fireworks display to support the fireworks, insurance, and related expenses for the total amount of $12,500. Adopted a regular meaning, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 19, 2023. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here is Director McGuigan.
So Scranton Tomorrow is our partner, who's our fiscal sponsor and partner to actually manage the fireworks, since under our insurance doesn't fall under that, so they're gracious enough. So we help support them to do that, because it is a little bit expensive. And it's our, this is part of our fireworks sponsorship.
Same, basically the same every year, correct?
Yeah, this is since 2011. So we have this down to a science now.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 230105.
Entering into an agreement with Community Development Properties. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an agreement with Community Development Properties, Scranton Incorporated, to allow international fireworks to use the rooftop of the Linden Street Garage located 305 North Washington Avenue on Monday, July 3, 2023, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. for the purposes of a fireworks display. The agreement is among Community Development Properties, Scranton Incorporated, Scram Parking Authority, ABM Parking Services, Scranton Tomorrow, International Fireworks, and Lackawanna County. Adopted a regular meaning, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 19, 2023. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here is Director McGuigan.
So this is a parking agreement that all of the partners sign so that we have use of the, and this year it'll be the Linden Street Garage.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Maureen?
Nope.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 230106.
Granting the Scranton Tomorrow funding request. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby grant the cultural partnership funding request for the Scranton Tomorrow organization for the July 3 fireworks display to support the fireworks, insurance, and related expenses for the total amount of $12,500. Adopted a regular meaning, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 19, 2023. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here is Director McGuigan.
So Scranton Tomorrow is our partner, who's our fiscal sponsor and partner to actually manage the fireworks, since under our insurance doesn't fall under that, so they're gracious enough. So we help support them to do that, because it is a little bit expensive. And it's our, this is part of our fireworks sponsorship.
Same, basically the same every year, correct?
Yeah, this is since 2011. So we have this down to a science now.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 230107.
Awarding the County Holiday Vendor Hut fabrication. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby award Lackawanna County Holiday Vendor Hut fabrication to Reclamation Industrial Furnishings, 1552 Dixon Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18509, the lowest, most responsible bidder, at $218,577.30, and does hereby enter into a construction contract with Reclamation Industrial Furnishings. Adopted a regular meaning, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 19, 2023. Finally, once again, here is Ms. McGuigan.
So I'll try to be brief, but just to give some background, in 2013, we started a winter market that's gone through several formats, and it's been very successful. I mean, it went from indoors in the mall to here, to the street. But during the pandemic, we moved it to be safe on Courthouse Square, and we just found that was a really great venue for it. If you've ever been to Bryant Park, or Bethlehem, or Philadelphia, we have a mini version of those holiday markets. And every year, we have tents, but we've been trying to find a way to make it sustainable and, you know, easy to do. So we came up with this idea to borrow some of those ideas, if you've seen them, little wooden huts. And this, we started this idea a few years ago, and we did do a bid in 2021, but it was expensive, COVID prices, so we had to put it on hold. And so we were able to secure an LSA statewide grant that will pay for most of them to be fabricated. They'll be collapsible, we have a place to store them, and also, the nice thing is we can let other communities borrow them for their events. So I'm excited about this project. Nice thing is, Reclamation is honoring their bid that they put in in 2021, so we're going to go ahead.
This is actually a great program.
Oh, thanks, Commissioner.
And again, like you said, a favorite, ever in Bryant Park in New York. This is how it's done, and it's great for the area and great for the community, and really appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
The market? Oh, sorry. Yeah, thank you for your support in investing in this. You know, we have data that it's been very successful for our small businesses and artists. The dates of this, it's always first Friday weekend of December, so I think that might be the second, third, and fourth this year.
Great. Looking forward to it.
Yep. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Maureen.
Thank you.
Resolution 230108.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, these are appointments to the Lackawanna County Disability Action Committee. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna County Disability Action Committee. Mr. Keith R. Williams, 401 Vennard Road, Clark Summit, Clark's Green, excuse me, term to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2024. Robert Walsh, 2048 Cedar Avenue, Scranton, term to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2024. Dominic Masty, 538 Spruce Street, Scranton, term to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2024. Joseph Salva, 107 Commons Drive, Elephant, turn to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2025. Elizabeth Ann Bonin, 817 Matthew Avenue, Scranton, term to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2024. Patrick Williams, 612 Timberland, Clark Summit, term to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2024. Be further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna County Disability Action Committee. Mr. Michael Sporer, 1026 Ridge Street, Scranton, term to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2025. Derek Rains, 919 Monroe Avenue, Scranton, term to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Really, it's just a committee that we need to have operational, and it's, we're just making many reappointments and a couple new appointments. Anybody have any questions?
Nope, they're all good additions.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Opportunity for the public to address the board. Go ahead, Gary.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Gary Duncan. I'm the chairman for the Pennsylvania Council on Aging. I was last here February the 1st of this year with my concerns about the utility rates. I want to thank you for your support on that. When I came, at that time, we had 8,000 complaints that we had identified. Of course, you all know that grew to over 800,000. So it's a Commonwealth-wide problem, and I do appreciate the Commissioner's support. I'm here today on another matter. Again, I'm also a resident of Lackawanna County, I live in Dunmore, Pennsylvania. I'm here today to actually thank the Commissioners of Notariani, as well as Chris Shermack and Debbie Dominic. Commissioner Notariani, when I initially spoke to you about my concerns about an ongoing mental health crisis that we see Commonwealth-wide, as well as suicide awareness, you clearly heard my concerns when I spoke to you. You probably gave me the foremost important words any public servant could say to a citizen. And these are what, this is what you said to me, I don't even know if you remember, you said, "How can we help?" And have you ever. So today, I stand before you all in gratitude because of you and your team. I know Joe D'Renzo is here today, Sarah McDonald, and I'm sure countless others that I'm not even aware of. The message of 988 and 9881 is or will be heard on WNEPTV, WEZX 107, WMGS 93.7, WWRR 105 FM, and WILK 103.1. I can tell you on behalf of the Council on Aging, on the five regions of the Commonwealth that I'm responsible for, our county is out in front. Lackawanna County, I'm so proud of what you've all done in terms of mental health crisis and in terms of the suicide hotline. For those of you here today who may not be aware, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. I'm well aware we're in mid-April, but May will be here before you know it. One in five adults face a mental health crisis every day. If you go to a site, www-countyhealthranking.org, in our county, we have 5.1 mental health days every 30 days. That's what, that's what our adults are facing here. In the United States, there's one suicide every 11 minutes. As Chairman of the Council on Aging, I represent the elderly of PA across 67 counties. I want to thank Commissioner Shermack, because due to you, I serve in the Lackawanna County Suicide Prevention Alliance. I'm also thanks to Jason Kavulich on the Advisory Board for the Lackawanna County Area Agency on Aging. Mental health affects all groups, but I'm here as the Chairman for the Council on Aging. 18% of all suicides are attempted by adults over the age of 60. In Lackawanna County, out of 215,615 citizens, 20% of our citizens are over the age of 65. Persons in poverty in our county are 13.7%. Mental health crisis, obviously, when I give you those statistics that come from the 2020 U.S. Census, when I give you those numbers, you can appreciate why our mental health crisis days are as high as they are. As with most age groups, the majority of the elderly who kill themselves are male. As high as those numbers are, the American Association for Marriage and Family Therapy suggests those rates are underreported by as much as 40% due to what we in healthcare refer to as silent suicides. What's a silent suicide? They would include overdoses, self-imposed starvation, dehydration, and quote "accidents." The rate of suicide completion in this age group is high because the means that they use to commit suicide are so very lethal. We all know what the pandemic did. Lost school days, bullying on social media, loneliness. Our elderly are silently and almost invisibly tucked away in high rises. They outlive their families, their spouses, their friends, and in some cases, even their physicians. At some point, there's literally no one left living from their past. In the elderly, mental health crises occur far too routinely. Suicidal ideation, unfortunately, is not uncommon in the elderly. How many of you here today live in a municipality with a website? If so, I would encourage everybody, our elected officials, everybody, to make sure that 988 and 9881 gets out on it. If you go to dunmorepa.gov, I spoke to our council. We do, we are blessed, we have a website in Dunmore. If you go to it, the first thing that's going to pop up is, they were very kind to me, and they got our message of 998 and 9881 already on our municipal website. I ask all of you today, as the Council on Aging Chair, everybody, to reach out to every municipality. In Lackawanna County, we have two cities, we have 17 boroughs, we have 21 townships, we have 12 school districts, two of whom are in other counties. Lackawanna Trail is Lackawanna and Wyoming County. Forest City, I believe, is actually in Lackawanna, and two other counties. But we have 12 counties. I would ask that we somehow reach out to them with our resources and encourage them to get the 998 and the 9881 message out. And I do have to tell you this on a very personal level. Monday of this week, I had a flat tire. I went to a tire service center in Music, and I won't give the person a free commercial. But at the service center, I wound up, the person next to me was, we got talking. He was a veteran of both Afghanistan and Iraq. I don't want to get emotional. But he literally told me if it wasn't for a 9881, he wouldn't be here today. He was from Musick. I asked him to reach out to his borough, his municipality, to see what we can do there. If you feel alone, if you're helpless, if you feel misunderstood, I wouldn't care if it was 2:00 p.m. or 2:00 a.m. You know, the straw that breaks the camel's back comes at different times for different people. I'm encouraging everybody, inform others, make a difference. Based on what that veteran taught me Monday, you're going to save a life. Again, I, I can't thank all of you. Joe, you're here somewhere today, please tell Sarah McDonald, I appreciate it. Sarah got a beautiful column on 988 and the county advantage. I hauled this up, this is from the Scranton Times. It's running every Sunday. Joe can tell you, I can probably tell you the schedule of when every advertisement is gonna run on every radio station, on the television stations, as well as in the Scranton Times. But it's beautiful, it's well done, it's 988. And it clearly states on it, "Struggling with depression or anxiety and need someone to talk to, need emotional support, know someone who needs help. 988 Suicide and Crisis Hotline. 9881, if you're a veteran, these are trained mental health professionals. If you're suffering from PTSD." I ran three rehab clinics at the Wilkes-Barre Veterans Administration Center. You know how important this is. I think we've all been touched by somebody who's either committed suicide or received the treatment to prevent a suicide. Mental health strikes everybody, strikes at all hours of the day. Commissioner Notary Annie, I know you pushed this for me. Commissioner Shermack, I'll never be able to thank you for getting me on the Lackawanna County Suicide Prevention Task Force. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it, I really do. Thanks for all your hard work. Joe, everybody on your team, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, the, the Suicide Prevention Alliance, um, you know, we started that early on as I was a, a new commissioner, and, you know, we have almost 180 members now. It's comprised of veterans, local suicide prevention, folks like NAMI, and the other one is Northeast Suicide Prevention Initiative. But we have Scranton Counseling. I said the veterans associations are, different ones are involved. We have school districts now that are involved that are sending counselors. So when we meet, we meet every other month, um, and it's basically to get everyone on the same page, to get out this information so everybody knows the 988 number, the 9881 number. Those are things that we discuss and, and get out into the community. So, you know, that's been tremendous, um, and I, I'm thrilled to have Gary on the, on our committee with us, um, and we're gonna continue to do that good work. And, you know, this is another, our, our big thing here in Lackawanna County, or, or as commissioners, our Health and Human Services. That's our big thing. That's what we do in, as a county, and as a county entity. With the development of the, the Health Department, we'll be able, even address these things even more. They'll be, you'll be able to walk into our Health Department, to our clinic, if you have any kind of health crisis, they will direct you right on, in the building, right to people that can help and get you the further help that you need. So that's an ongoing thing. It's, it's, I think it's gonna be a tremendous, tremendous asset to Lackawanna County and to surrounding counties here, so, um, thank you.
We began, began that suicide prevention thing shortly after we became commissioners, uh, and it's a, it is a great program, and it's a great thing. And as Commissioner Shermack said, the, the Health Department is something that's gonna be really important for Lackawanna County. It's, people don't realize. Joan, I see you just walked in, would you like to say something before?
No, no, I just came from the bathroom.
Okay, I didn't want to, I didn't want to.
I'm doing library.
Okay. Okay. No one else? Commissioners, other business, Chris?
Uh, well, I touched on the, uh, the Health and Human Services side. Look, Lackawanna County's a great place to live, thanks to people like Maureen McGuigan, for all the work that she does with bringing arts and culture, the fireworks, the, the Christmas, um, atmosphere, the courthouse. I think that's all great stuff, and, and we need more of that. It's just, it's just great. I'm, I'm, it's a privilege for me. It's an absolute privilege to me to be a commissioner here, and, and I, I, I thank everyone that, that helps. And our library system, we have some of the nicest libraries around. They do, they go over and above. I can't wait for the new book mobile, that ought to be interesting, and, um, just, all good stuff, so thank you for all that you do, too.
People don't realize how, uh, the, uh, culture in the community drives economic development, how the quality of life drives economic development. That, that's what's gonna make us a vital, solid community. That's what's gonna expand our tax base. They're the kind of things that we need to do, and we have to be more aggressive in doing. The library system is wonderful, Maureen's projects all do great. You have to help people, and you're concerned about the aging in the, in the children and youth, but you also have to have a, a vibrant community for, to work for, so we're able to help people. That's it, thank you. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.